Playing hockey for the last nineteen years. He now enjoys playing golf, snowboarding and boating. Also enjoys working out and being outside with his dog. And Scott is looking forward to continue his career with our agency and learning as much as he can. Please welcome Scott Rodman.
Is he here?
I do not see him unless he has a different name under the phone call list. I s- I do not see him on his name, unfortunately.
Okay. Well, welcome Scott. Thank you for joining the team. All right, um, is, uh, Daryl Jordan here, Public Works Director to introduce Michael Lewis?
Yes.
All right.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening, Councilman. Thank you for taking this time. So I introduced an important person to just, uh, joined our team. Um, I'm excited to introduce our newest member to our Public Works Team, Mr. Michael Lewis. He is a California State University of Monterey Bay graduate and dedicated government professional for fourteen years. Have experience in working in local municipalities. His most recent experience in working with multimillion dollar budgets in addition to training and developing teams. His last post was with the County of Monterey in the Auditor Controller Department as an Accounts Payable Supervisor. In his six and a half years of service there, he oversaw eight hundred and fifty million dollars in annual disbursements and led the county's daily disbursement operations between thirty county departments, including one hundred and seventy-two bed acute care public funded hospital in Natavidad Medical Center. Additionally, he played a pivotal role in upgrading the county's enterprise resource planning on the financial side and served as the financial project lead for their ERP upgrade, where he subsequently trained county staff on the updates and all the other new features the system boasted. He under, uh, updated existing policies such as the travel and business expense policy, developed an unclaimed money policy among others to help fight against fraud. He issued the majority of the county's tax forms and reviewed and monitored county contracts for accuracy. Prior to that, he worked for the City of Seaside, where he also managed payables, receivables and utility billing. His other responsibilities included management and maintenance of developer deposits, reconciliation of CDBG funds and redevelopment loans. He also was responsible for the maintenance of military contracts between the Presidio of Monterey Annex and the city while assisting with their budget. He's an avid MBA and NFL fan. Uh, he enjoys playing sports, specifically basketball with his eleven year old son Donovan. He also enjoys hiking, riding his bike and walking his dog with his family when time permits. Please help me welcome Michael Lewis.
Welcome, Michael. Is he here?
Yes. Madam Mayor, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, I'll just give you a quick blurb as Daryl mentioned, I'm Mike Lewis. I'm the new management analyst for Public Works and very excited to be here because I'm passion, passionate about public service. I've been doing it for a long time. And I just want to say, without taking too much of your time, my experience here has been overwhelmingly positive for my own department, all the way on down to planning, building, finance, you name it, everyone's been great and I've been enjoying my time so far.
Yay. Well, thank you and welcome. And whether you were for the Chiefs or the Bills last night, it's pretty hard not to be, uh, not to feel bad for the Bills.
Mayor, you just asked an important question. Let's ask Mr. Lewis. Who's your, who's your favorite football team?
I'm a New York Jets fan, actually. I know, I know.
For yeah.
All right. Well, thank you and welcome, Michael.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Okay ceremonial items. We have none. So we're on to board and commission interviews. And we've got, uh, one, two, three, four, five commissions that we are going to be doing interviews for tonight. We ought to be able to do each commission in one round with the number of applicants that we have. So we're gonna do this alphabetically and I'm gonna ask our city clerk to admit the Arts and Culture Commission applicants so that we can all, um, their applications, we all have in our packets. Um, I'll ask just a general question, let them speak for a couple of minutes on their own, and then I'll come back to council to see if there's anything specific, but let's try to keep the same, you know, we'll keep the same questions to each applicant and be mindful of, of the time with all of them.
Yes, Madam Mayor, uh, uh, let me make sure that I see, uh, Ms. Camille McCormick.
Right.
That's on the attending list. I, she, I do recall that she was going to be calling in. Please raise your hand.
Okay.
In, all right, I will promote you to a okay, uh, this-
I know you were gonna do a report too. If you want to do that, you can do that before we get started too, your staff report.
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, just like, good evening, Mayor and council members, just like to, uh, that you'll be conducting your interviews for the following commissions this evening. Arts and Culture Commission, Library Commission, Open Government Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, Personnel Commission and Planning Commission. Uh, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission and the Historic Heritage Commission were consolidated at the January tenth city council meeting. Uh, the city did not receive any applications for BPAC. The two applicants who applied for the Historic Heritage Commission were asked if they would be interested in applying to the Planning Commission. Out of the two, one was responsive and for this interview and is on the planning commission applicants for tonight. Uh, without further ado, let me go ahead and promote all of these, uh, applicants for the Arts and Culture Commission, for the Arts and Culture Commission, Ms. Camille McCormick, Carmin de Paulo, Frank Patterson and Alexandra Purdue. Would you mind please raising your hand? Okay, I have three of the four applicants. I do not, I have Alexandra Purdue. I have, uh, number that ends at six nine zero seven and, uh, phone number that X and ends at three five eight seven, six nine zero seven. Can you please, uh, say your name?
Frank Patterson.
Thank you. And, uh, three five eight seven, can you say your name?
Camille McCormick.
Thank you.
So then Carmine De Paolo is missing?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. So, um, welcome, uh, the three of you. May I get started, Ty, or is there-
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you for applying. Um, I would like to start by asking each of you, separately of course, to give us just a couple of minutes, um, introduction about yours. I mean, we've read your applications, but whatever it is you would like to point out tonight, please go ahead and do that. Tell us a little about yourselves and why, why you think, uh, this commission is the right fit for you and you're the best candidate? And then we'll go back to council and see if there are any specific questions. I would ask each of you to please be mindful of the time. I mean, we'll be timing too, but just be aware of, of the time. So you don't, you know, do like what I'm doing right now. Okay. So I'm going to start with Alexandra Purdue and ask the question, um, like I just said, go ahead and tell us about yourself and why you think you'd be the best choice for the commission.
Mayor and Councilmen and Women, um, my name is Alexandra Purdue and I have, um, I did my education in anthropology and music. Um, I went through most of the way through my doctoral degree. Um, and I have run, um, I ran Salvi Harps in Los Angeles for about a decade. And I've been teaching, uh, so I was selling harps for most of the world. I was the National Sales Manager for North and South America and most of Asia. And I've been teaching through my personal harp studio through Salvi Harps and also through Stanford, um, for a year, for, um, over twenty years now. Uh, when I was living down in LA in Anaheim, I built a huge, um, arts community, um, in Anaheim and then in Los Angeles, um, of free concerts and also paid concerts, but mostly free, um, kind of involving all of the local musicians and composers. And getting a lot of the children involved in service and also in, um, just having community. So I'm looking forward to, now that we live in Gilroy permanently for three years, I'm getting more involved here and trying to develop a larger community here.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right, uh, Frank. Oh, yeah, Frank Patterson. Please go next.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Uh, good, good evening, uh, Mayor and Councilman. Um, my name is Frank Patterson and I have been, I'm re, I'm currently retired, uh, from major medical and pharmaceutical companies, including Johnson and Johnson and Baxter Bioscience. I am also the Silicon Valley Diversity Choir and Orchestra Director. And we put on performances, uh, throughout the year, but mainly and, uh, Christmas performance, um, which, uh, we, uh, usually have at the San, let's see, the Saint Joseph's Basilica downtown. And it's standing room only. Uh, we raise it, uh, we raise funds, uh, for, uh, various organizations that are in need. Um, I've worked at these companies, uh, for, uh, almost, uh, twenty-five years. And I've always been involved intimately involved with, uh, the community of employees in putting on, uh, programs, uh, such as the Martin Luther, uh, King Day, uh, program as well as, uh, many other international festivals, uh, throughout, uh, uh, the, the Bay Area, uh, mainly with, uh, Johnson and Johnson, uh, LifeScan, which is a diabetes, uh, or was the diabetes division. Uh, I've lived in Gilroy now for, uh, twenty-two years. We live at Meritage Estates. I really like the community quite a bit and I feel like we really need to encourage more arts, uh, performing arts and, and culture in our community and I would like to be a part of it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, Camille McCormick.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good evening. Uh, Shaker said brevity is the soul of wit, so I will be brief. Uh, I was initially in the Public Arts Committee and that got absorbed into the Arts and Culture Commission because again, it, uh, that's what, what was determined to be done. So I got catapulted into the Arts and Culture Commission. The reason, uh, I'm reapplying is because I would like to, I don't, we can't retrieve what the past two years was, but there was quite an adjustment in that initial year, year and a half. So we, you weren't able to really get your feet in, you know, again, moving forward the mission and what, what, what we can do as an Arts and Culture Commission. But what I, my, I have, I, you can see everything that I have. I have quite a, quite a comprehensive arts and culture life, but my, my goal at this point is because of the way the community is going in the arts and culture is expressing, you know, what this community represents, the different cultures and then manifest it through the arts. Well, my emphasis at this point, my mother was in a wheelchair since nineteen fifty-four. I'm not going to boast. She spent about three years, the last years of her life with Arlene Silva to create the Arts and Culture Commission. My point being is I now am with, um, I'm the community, uh, spokesman, spokesperson for, uh, company that's been here for twenty-five years. It serves, serves the most severe of the disabled in our community and I'd like to now at this point be get much more inclusive, uh, and outreach into what you might call the disabled part of the community. And that, um, is really all I have to say at this point. So I would be most honored. Yeah, I would be most honored.
Thank you. Thank you, doll. All three of you are here tonight. Okay, council, and thank you all for being brief. You were all under two minutes. Thank you. Um, council, is there any particular question that, um, anybody wants to pose to all three of these individuals? Um, okay, council member Arminderis, I see your hand raised.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, and thank you applicants. Um, I'd like each of you to answer, uh, if you would. Tell me what equity and inclusion means to you in the context of public art and culture.
Okay, well, I'll start with that in the reverse order. Then I'll go, um, Camille, why don't you take that question and then we'll go to Frank and then Alexandra.
Yeah, equity and, and as I mentioned, I look now to the disabled community that is very, very underrepresented in our community. And that I will speak, be brief on that. And that is, is one of the outreaches in equity and diversity because they are most overlooked.
Okay, thank you.
That is my answer.
Thank, thank you. Thank you. Uh, Frank Patterson. Frank, are you there? Okay, uh, I'll go to Alexandra.
Um, hi. So, um, my main goal right now is to bring music, um, not just the classical music, but also, um, music of the folk, folk arts. Um, to people who can't afford it. And that's been my goal for quite some time. Um, and also to reach out to through different cultures. So, uh, for example, my husband's Indian. So I want to make sure that we aren't just, um, promoting high classical music in the community, but things that will involve people and get them more involved to help in, um, be more of a community so that we're not just four, four or five different sides of Gilroy, but one inclusive community.
Thank you. All right, Frank Patterson? Can you take-
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I, I think, uh, as I said, I've lived in the community now for about twenty-two years. It's a very diverse community with, with people from various different, uh, ethnic as well as social backgrounds. And I think, uh, from my perspective, I would like to involve various, various, uh, different types of, uh, uh, folks, uh, in, uh, presenting arts and, and culture in the community so that, uh, we could really bring the community together so that we could feel, uh, that we're, uh, a closer community. I think that arts and, um, culture, uh, had sort of ties in the various different facets of the community.
Thank you. All right, council, um, are we good? Can I, uh, move on? Okay, thank you, all three of you. Um, we're going to move on to our next commission. Sorry? Oh, we-
Thank you.
Right. Oh, you're welcome. And as you know, um, our next meeting, February seventh, is when we'll be announcing all of the appointments, but thank you so much for applying. Okay, so that brings us to, uh, Library Commission. We have one applicant for this. Said, is that applicant here, Ty?
Yes, I'm going to be checking if Said, Mr. Said Nushabadi, if you are there, please raise your hand. I do not see him in the attending list. Uh, if you are, uh, one of those phone numbers, you'll need to press star nine. Okay, once more for, uh, Mr. Said Nushabadi. Okay, Mayor.
Okay, then moving on to Open Government Commission, we have two applicants for this. Um, why don't we see if they're here?
Yes, uh, Ms. Tia Marie Enriquez and, um, Akur Vara Darajan. If you are there, please raise your hand. Again, this is for the Open Government Commission, uh, Tia Marie Enriquez and Akur Vara Darajan. I do not see their names, nor I see any raised hands, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, council, we do have their applications. This is just if they, yeah, we're, we're gonna come to interview. Okay, Parks and Recreation, we have one applicant.
Yes, and that would be Eric, uh, Adondo, and he has raised his hand. I will go ahead and, uh, allow him to talk.
Thank you. Eric, can you hear me?
Yes, Mayor, I can hear you and thank you, board members.
No, thank, thank you for applying and, uh, why don't you take a couple of minutes and tell us a little bit about yourself and why, uh, why you're applying for this commission?
Uh, let's see, I moved here from Texas about six years ago, but I used to live here in Gilroy when I was a child. I'm real young, actually just right over there off, what is that, I O F Street when I was a kid? And, um, my parents divorced, so we moved to Texas. I used to come bring my family and kids here to visit other family members throughout my life and now I had a chance to move out here when I hit my fifties and my wife and I decided to pack up and move out here. And so Gilroy's been very big and important to me my whole, my whole life, pretty much. So I've been in sales positions my whole life. I've done everything for Farmer Brothers. I've sold Gatorade, Pepsi and industrial supplies. So I'm more of been a salesman for pretty much my whole life, but Gilroy's been pretty much home to me. I live right here on Church Street. Like I said, I've had my dad, my grandparents, uncle, family live here and I've been here pretty much every, you know, coming here every year when I was a kid. And one thing I thought was, um, I used to bring my daughter and I used to bring my son here. They're, you know, different ages, but when I come visit family and I used to take him to Christmas Hill Park, Miller Park and just have a great time with them and it felt good, safe. And now, you know, I go for a walk around the neighborhood and I see some of the situations and I don't know the budgets or the planning commissions, but I know, you know, some of the people are scared because of the homelessness and so forth, but I'd like to sure have an opportunity to look at the budgets, the planning and events for the community.
Awesome. All right. Well, thank you. I don't know about that Texas accent though. I'm just kidding.
I don't think I have one.
What his football team is.
Some people, some people will say, where are you from?
Okay.
Some people will say, where are you from? But I don't think I have it that bad, but, uh, my wife was remotely from home and she still deals with Texas, so she definitely got the accent.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna go to council and see if anyone, um, I'm, I'm gonna give other council members besides Councilmember Arminderis a chance to ask a question. Does anyone else, um, have a question to ask of Eric? If not, then Councilmember Arminderis, go ahead and ask your question.
Thank you. Um, Eric, thank you for applying. Um, I'm wondering, how would you work to make city activities, uh, more accessible to kids who can't afford it? If you have any-
I guess that's, I'm not, you know, there's so, you know, different ways to bring in money. I know there's fundraisers and so forth. Like I said, I don't know the budgets and the planning. I'm not sure if that's top of, of priority for the board, you know, to say, hey, let's look at events for the community, but I do agree. Getting the community together is such a diverse, you know, population here and regardless, it'd be nice to bring them all together, low income, because everybody's struggling now regardless. COVID, you know, the infla, in, inflation, but yeah, it'd be nice to see a way. I would like to pop up some ideas. I'm sorry, I don't have any at the moment, but, uh, yeah, it'd be nice to find a way to get the, uh, lower income and other people just involved together where we're all realizing we can unite as one and just have kids are kids. It's all about the community and the family and the children, you know, and it's just, it'd be nice to have something great like that, concerts in the park and where everybody feels safe. Try to find little communities that can teach the kids some things and learn and, you know, big donations would be great.
Thank you. Thanks for your answer.
All right. Thank you for that answer. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for applying and, um, February seventh is when we will come back to this. Thank you, Eric.
Oh, you're so welcome. My question is, do you need me or do you want me to stay on the phone for the rest of this meeting?
No, not at all. That's totally up to you.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Go enjoy your evening. Okay, thanks.
Oh, just wanted to check.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. So Personnel Commission is next. We have five applicants for that commission, um, two seats open. So Ty, you want to go ahead and see who is here for that?
Yes, I need, uh, like to request Ms. Marissa Harrow, Commissioner, uh, I'm sorry, Connor Olenberger, Sergio Patterson, Annie Tomasello and Nita Ed, Eddie Mitchell, uh, to please raise their hand. Okay, so I have Connor here. I see Nita. I have Marissa. And I have, uh, let me see. Petra Massias, but I'm assuming that is Sergio Patterson. Let me make sure. Petra, Petra, uh, person with-
It would not, I don't think so.
Okay. So I have Marissa, I have Connor and I have Nita along with- Okay, go right ahead.
Okay, so you're thinking that Petra Massias is with Sergio Patterson?
Yes, oh, uh, let me confirm with that. Petra Massias, uh, can you confirm, uh, this is regards to the Personnel Commission?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, so that means, thank you. So we're dismissing Annie Tomasello?
Yes.
Okay. All right, then welcome, everybody who has applied, uh, including incumbents. Thank you so much for being here. And I'm gonna start with, um, giving you each about two minutes to, uh, just introduce yourself and tell us why you would like to be on or continue with this commission. All right, I will start with, uh, Marissa.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Well, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak tonight. My name is Marissa Harrow. I am a lifelong Gilroy resident and looking for a way to become involved and give back to the community that I love. I believe that my education, training and public sector experience make me an excellent candidate to fill the seat on a person, on the Personnel Commission. I received my Master in Public Administration from San Jose State University in twenty seventeen. And during the MPA program, I learned how to use critical thinking techniques when analyzing how public organizations comply with federal, state and local laws as well as codes and regulations. I've also had the opportunity to hold various public sector, um, jobs. So I have different experience, including currently I am a management analyst for the Personnel Administration Unit with the Santa Clara County Probation Department. Previously, I was a human resources technician with Gavelin Community College. And I've also had the opportunity to work with the County Governor's Office of Emergency Services. And I have been the Director of Communications for the MPA Program Student Association.
Always not.
And I've also had the opportunity to work, uh, with the City of Gilroy as a Violence Prevention Intern with the South County Youth Task Force and I really enjoyed my time there. Um, I believe my human resources experience would add value to this, uh, commission. I have experienced analyzing and revising HR policies and procedures to ensure compliance with state and federal regulations. I have practiced, um, explaining and interpreting HR policies, procedures, practices and collective bargaining agreements. And I have, you know, different, um, experience working with recruitment with, um, different commissions across campus, with different employee groups. And lastly, I am a lifelong resident of Gilroy, like I mentioned earlier. I'm eager to serve and give back to the community. And I believe that this, um, is a perfect fit for me because it will allow me to expand my professional experience and network while giving back to the community. And I, uh, am committed to demonstrating and maintaining a high degree of integrity and good judgment when making any recommendations.
Thank you, Marissa. Thank you very much. All right, same question to Connor.
Hello, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you for having me. Um, I am a Gilroy resident for the last few years and currently we are trying to build a house here, so we must like it a little bit. Um, I have been an HR professional for over seven years. And, you know, it's what I do. It's what I went to school for. It's why I'm, I have been in the area. I attended San Jose State and graduated with my bachelor's degree, um, in Business Administration with the HR Management Concentration. And I have been an HR professional for over seven years. I've worked at nonprofits, I've worked for other government agencies, I worked for Valley Water. Um, I currently work for Pathway Society in San Jose. And I haven't ever worked in Gilroy, so that's why I really would like the opportunity to give back my knowledge, skills and abilities to this beautiful city and really, you know, use my expertise to better in any way that I can, um, this city and, and all of its glory. Um, I also hold my PHRCA, which is my professional in HR California, which is knowing all of the California laws and regulations and policies. Which is knowing all of the California laws and regulations and policies. And I've held that since twenty eighteen, so I also feel like that would be um, a value to the city and all of its members. Um, but other than that, like I say, I really wanna give back. I know as HR professionals, we're all very passionate about what we do, so I would love to bring that passion to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Connor. Okay, I will move on to Sergio Patterson. Sergio, you can unmute yourself and uh. Go ahead and tell us a little bit about uh. Yourself and uh, why you're applying for the Personnel Commission. Okay, can you hear me, Sergio? Okay, under the name of Petra. Okay, uh, move to Nita. Eddie Mitchell. Nita, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead, take it away.
Thanks a lot. Well, I'm a registered nurse, um, who's been a nurse for forty years and I'm now working part-time at Gavlin. As the coordinator of their student health services. Um, so I have time to donate to the Personnel Commission and I've been a. Uh, a member of the Personnel Commission for the last four years. And uh, I just love working with the team and, and the experience that they all bring to the table. We all learn. And just try and do our best for the community. I lived in Gilroy, um, moved here when we were, when I was five. And uh, just love this town and wanna um, give back to the community, so I try and be real active in the community. And uh, I feel like this is something I'm qualified to do as I've. Uh, participated in uh, human resources with just about everywhere I've worked. I have served on uh, numerous City of Gilroy hiring panels for various positions. And I really enjoy that and feel like I'm, I'm helping uh, in my little, little way that I can. And I'd just love to be considered to continue my service uh, to Gilroy on this commission.
Thank you, Nita. Okay, I'm gonna go back to Sergio Patterson. If you are there and can unmute yourself. We'll give you two minutes. Okay, I'll go to council. Does anyone on the council have a particular question they'd like to ask of the applicants?
Uh, Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Uh, actually, I received an email saying that Annie Tomaseo is trying to log into Zoom at the moment. Would you like to have her?
Absolutely.
Okay, uh, Ms. Tomaseo, if you are there, please raise your hand.
This is the one Italian name, Ty, so Tomassello.
Tomassello. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Ms. Thomas, uh, Tomassello, if you are there, please raise your hand. Unfortunately, I do not see her on the list itself, but um. Man, Madam Mayor.
Okay, well, we'll move on. If, if she's there, we'll let her back in the same way. We'll let uh, Sergio speak too, if that ever comes on. I, I'm not getting a response there. Okay, so I see Councilmember Armadarius has a question. Does any other council member have a question for uh, these applicants? Okay, then Councilmember Armadarius, go ahead and ask your question.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and thank you to these applicants as well. Um. I'd like the applicants to tell us if they consider themselves familiar with uh, per board, Skelly hearings and. Uh, interpreting uh, collective bargaining agreements, things like that.
Okay, um, Nita, I'll go backwards. I'm gonna go Nita, Connor, Marissa. And then see if um, Annie or, or Sergio are available. So Nita, do you wanna start uh, trying to tackle that question?
Sure. Uh, being on the commission already, we have training ongoing, so we have been trained on some of these issues. And while I've been on the uh, commission, we really haven't had any of these issues come up, but uh. Leanne is, is careful to make sure that we're trained so that we can be able to handle some of these situations.
Great, alright, thank you. Okay, Connor, um, you wanna go next?
Yes, thank you. Uh, so right now I do not have um, experience in those two fields. Um, right now, I, I, yeah, I prepare this CEO as much as I can, as he's the board member of our agency. Um, but that's why I'm really wanting to gain experience and, you know, become a quick learner for um, this board.
Okay, Councilmember, was that question answered for you? Because it cut out on my end. Did, yes, okay.
Yeah, I heard Connor.
Okay, uh, Marissa, would you like to go ahead?
Yes, thank you. So I currently am receiving Skelly hearing training through with the Santa Clara County Probation Department. And previously, I do have experience working um, with collective bargaining agreements, different ones. Um, at Gavlin College, I worked with two. And at the Santa Clara County Probation Department. I do work with approximately five different MOUs, Memorandums of Understanding. And I do have experience um, following the disciplinary process as well as the grievance process. Um, with multiple of these um, either MOUs or collective bargaining agreements. I have also helped in preparation for um, different types of um, complaints. Uh, grievance process disciplinary hearings. I've helped prepare materials, organize agendas. Um, and I believe um, that is, that is my answer. I don't, I'm not sure if you would like me to elaborate on any of that.
No, thank you. That's, that's.
Yes, thank you. Okay, has uh, Annie been able to, Annie Tomassello been able to join?
I am currently checking, uh, Ms. Annie Tomassello. If you are there, please raise your hand. Also, I here also received an email from Mr. Sergio Patterson to see if he can attend. I am, if you are there, Mr. Patterson, please raise your hand. Okay. Unfortunately, I do not see any other raised hands other than the three panelists.
Okay, then, um, alright, that being said, then thank you, all of you for being here tonight and for sharing your time with us. February seventh, stay tuned. Thank you. Okay, um, Planning Commission is next. We have seven applicants for that. I don't know how many are here, but Ty, I'm sure you will tell us.
Yes, uh, I like for uh, applicants Paolo Basilio. Uh, Zafar Khan and Dora Kushner, Adriana Leonard. Uh, David uh, Matzak and. I'm sorry, uh, and Zintis Rix along with Akur Varaz. Dal Rajan, to please raise their hand, so I can unmute your uh, phone, um. Your microphone.
Ty, quick question. Sorry, uh, you mentioned David, but David applied for the historic heritage.
That's folded into Planning Commission now, Fred, and he's uh, he's asked to be considered for Planning Commission.
Alright, okay.
I see also that Sergio Patterson has joined the. He's in the panelist's list, I mean, the attendees' list.
Okay, I have. Andor, I have Dave. And let me see. I have Petra Massias also raising uh, her hand, but.
She's not an applicant here.
Correct. I have uh, Adriana. So we have Adriana, we have David, and we also have. Zinkis is here. Alright. Mister, go right ahead.
So Ty, if, if Sergio Patterson is in fact here, do you wanna let him in and we can just? Take care of that, you know, that person has been trying to, this was for the Personnel Commission.
Correct, uh, I'm more than happy to allow him to be entered.
Okay.
Should he be?
I don't know if he's been here all along or was just able to log on.
If Mr. Patterson, if you are here, please raise your hand too.
Okay, okay. I just, okay, so Mr. Patterson, can you go ahead and unmute yourself and tell us a little bit, just for two minutes? Hi, just, just spend uh, two minutes. You can go ahead and, and time yourself too. And just let us know a little bit about yourself and why you're applying for the Personnel Commission, and then we're gonna move on to planning.
Sure, sounds good. Um, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Sorry about that, I just, I've been in back-to-back meetings all day, so I'm a little bit scrambled. But nice to meet everybody. My name's Sergio Patterson. I live in Gilroy. I'm currently a program manager at LinkedIn. I've worked at a number of Silicon Valley companies over the last ten to twelve years. Um, think of a big tech company, I've probably worked there. So I have a lot of experience in program management, hiring. Um, dealing with, you know, a number of different issues across um. Number of companies dealing with stakeholders. Um, father of two, they keep me pretty busy. Um, just really excited about the opportunity to give back to the community. Um, I've given a lot to Silicon Valley and I think it's time for me to kind of bring some of my skills and strengths to the City of Gilroy.
Wonderful, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Armadarius, will you go ahead and ask him your question?
Sure, thank you. Sergio, I'm glad you were able to make it. Um, can you tell us how familiar you are, if you consider yourself familiar with Skelly hearings, uh, per board hearings? And interpreting collective bargaining agreements?
Uh, I, I'd say to answer those, I'm, I'm not familiar at all, to be perfectly honest. Um, collective barg- bargaining, I have some, some familiarity. Um, which is, I'm, I'm a big sports fans. I know, you know, there's, there's lots of that in terms of like. Getting, getting two sides who would come to a common agreement. Um, but I don't have any direct experience with any of those.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, well, thank you. Glad you could join us and on our next council meeting, February seventh, is when, uh, please join us again, that meeting. And that's when we'll um, announce who the new commissioners are. And uh, hope that those who maybe aren't able to fill a seat of one commission might consider a commission that maybe doesn't have enough applicants. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to the Planning Commission now, we have seven applicants and I think they're all here. So I'm just gonna take them uh, in alphabetical order to start, and then if we have questions after, I'll go in the reverse. So starting with Paolo. If you could please uh, spend about two minutes telling us a little bit about yourself. And why you wanna be on the Planning Commission and your understanding of what that means.
Madam Mayor, I do not see Paolo Basilio on.
Oh, I thought you had announced that he was here, sorry. Okay.
I have.
Zafar?
Madam Mayor, I do not have Zafar on the list either.
Oh, okay, Anador Kushner.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, do you want me to repeat the question?
No, um, I'm, I'm, I actually got all dressed up uh, to be on video.
Oh, we can't see your picture.
Uh, let me see. That's um, something that, well, anyway, um, never mind, I don't wanna waste everybody's time. So, a little bit about myself. Um, born and raised in Germany, that's why Anador probably looks unfamiliar to you. Uh, lived in the Bay Area pretty much the last forty years, yeah, five of those in Gilroy. And um, un- until relatively recently, I have thought of the Planning Commission as a, as a body that, that actually makes decision. Regarding planning for the, the city and have since, of course, found, found out that that's, happens at a, at a different level and with a job plan and. And um, city council and whatnot. Um, as you saw in my, in my little write-up. Um, I, I work for a tech company. I work with uh, engineers, with salespeople, executives. And so I'm kind of the middleman uh, that needs to be uh, communicating with everybody and I typically, you know, try to work on getting a win-win. In most of these situations. Um, it also means I'm used to following established rules and protocols and um. And how to communicate that to the various stakeholders. So. Uh, that's what, what I'm hoping to, to bring to the um, that, that particular position is, is um, I think we can. Help our residents understand uh, what is actually happening at the city and. And thereby being of service to the city council, because the more commu- communication we get out there. Um, I think that would help tremendously in avoiding the bashing of uh, council members on social media. Um, I see a lot of that is driven by just complete misinformation and, and our populace around town. And nobody seems to really understand who is making these decisions and so. You guys, the council members, uh, tend to get blamed for pretty much everything under the sun. Um, you know, that, that you have either nothing to do with, you, it's outside of your purview or um, that. And, and folks just need to kind of understand where, where these decisions are coming from and who does what. Uh, I think. I, I know I, I'm not the one that's gonna necessarily be communicating, but I can advocate for that and, and uh. Kind of get some thinking around that going.
Alright, thank you. Okay, Adriana, same question to you.
Yes, I'm here. Hello, everybody. Uh, my name is Adriana. And uh, I've been in Gilroy for four years, so I'm kind of a new resident. And um, so um, I graduated in business. Um, in a California State University with uh, focusing logistics. And I worked uh, over a decade in construction back in my home country in Brazil. And so I have the construction experience and uh, I did um, I have MBA in project management as well. Um, some social media experience, um, and I think above it all, um, I'm a people's person. I'm in very involved with the, with my neighbors, with the neighborhood. I'm an active member of the community. And I think if to be in that position, you need to be there with hands-on and know. What's going on and how to, how can you solve the things and what, what exactly is going on? And now what you hear and just what you see, what are the consequences, what you need to know what surrounds you. And I'm that person.
Thank you. Great. Okay, David Matuzak.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Um, yeah, I would like to say I've been on, you know, been in Gilroy for over twenty years. Uh, been involved with the Chamber of Commerce, I was a nine-year board member, uh, Historic Society, I'm on the board. Uh, I have a couple of Millsack properties. I've been, I was the first one to get that back in two thousand and two, so. A lot of interest in historical building and planning. Uh, previous to uh, my retirement, I spent about ten years in the quality improvement arena with the Baldridge. Which is a national quality improvement process and I was a senior examiner and also spent some time in the California Quality Improvement. So I can have a larger view of uh, organizations and uh, a bigger, like a holistic picture. Uh, I think I could be helpful on the Planning Commission, plus I have that interest in the historical buildings. And that's been moved into the Planning Commission, so I think I would have a, a spot there.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Alright, uh, Zintis?
Hello, thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers.
You're.
My name is Zintis Rix and I go by Z or Zent. And I'm interested in becoming a member of the Planning Commission because I understand the crucial role. Of the board shaping the future of Gilroy. I also understand um, the board's role is to plan and act as an advisory group to uh, the city council on issues. And um, policies relating to planning. And uh, to land the youth regulation. And community development. And I want to emphasize community development, because again, the board plays such a crucial role in shaping. Um, the future of Gilroy and what Gilroy looks, will look like in three, five, ten, fifteen, twenty years from now. I also understand the importance that the Planning Commission uh, developed positive relationships with uh. Gilroy's professional staff and elected officials. Uh, a little bit about me, I moved to Gilroy in twenty eighteen from Michigan. I graduated from Michigan State University in Political Science and Economics. I also have an active builder's license from the state of Michigan where I participated in building small residential communities.
Our voice only.
And uh, this required that I work with various municipalities and.
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm sorry to interrupt, but those of you who are not speaking, can you please mute yourselves? So that Z can continue? Go ahead. Okay, what just happened? I think Anador needs to be muted and Zintis needs to be unmuted. Ty, do they need to unmute? Okay, there we go. Go ahead, Z.
I'm all, I got muted. I don't know how that happened.
Yes. That's okay, please continue.
But anyway, I worked with various municipalities where I had to adhere to zoning requirements and to work with them for requested deviations that I, I needed to develop my properties. I have a current member of Sportsman's Chef, which is a local service organization. Our biggest claim to fame is our fishery where we take kids from Gilroy and surrounding areas who might have challenges. These challenges can be physical, they can be emotional, or some type of illness. And we take these kids fishing for a day. Our members also volunteer at the Garlic Festival. And we provide shuttle services to the Gilroy Assistance League, more commonly referred to as GALS, for their annual garden walk and fundraiser. Okay, I also volunteer my time to Gary and John in their efforts to develop Gourmet Alley. And for the past four years, I've become an active member, community member and in Gilroy. And I believe and think that my diverse background qualifies me to be a member of the Planning Commission. And I look forward to serving the city of Gilroy at a higher level.
Okay.
As a member of the commission.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, we have one more applicant we haven't heard from, if he is here at court. If is, is Akur. Vera Darajan here?
I don't believe so, Madam Mayor. He was also applied to the
Yes, right.
other commission previously.
Okay, then I'm going to go through, I have a question myself, but Councilmember Tovar, I see you have one. So why don't you go ahead and go with your question that we will ask to all of these same applicants in the reverse order? Okay, so go ahead, councilmember?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you to all the applicants and candidates. Appreciate your dedication in the city of Gilroy. I had a chance to read all your, your applications and specifically the one about what are your goals, but specifically what I want to ask each one is what is your vision of what Gilroy should and could be currently and in the future? As you all know, we are, we are a, we want to be a recreation and tourist destination. So as a planning commissioner, what would be your vision of Gilroy?
Okay, so again, please keep your answers under two minutes. So Z, you said it's okay to refer to you, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Why don't you go ahead and give that a start?
Okay, I envision the Sharks Arena at the Sports Complex. I think we have a great wine trail. I think we are becoming a a microbrewery destination as well. And we've even made the list on Taco, on a Taco Trail. And I, I believe that with the development, the community development, the, the housing situation, we're growing. I would like to bring in another grocery store that may challenge Safeway a little bit. Go Staff of Life, hint, hint. And I, I, I think with the proper guidance and adhering to the master plan, I think there's a, a great and wonderful future for, for Gilroy. And I think that developing Gilroy Gardens even further with the two options or proposals, I think we have a great opportunity to become a destination for families, not just for weekends, but for, for a week.
Okay, thank you. All right, David, Dave Matuzak.
Am I on? Am I on now?
Yes, you are.
Yeah, we had a little technical trouble earlier. Thanks. Yeah. Unfortunately, Z took a lot of the punch, but I really like to see a lot more done with Gilroy Gardens. I think that's five hundred and thirty-six acres, that's totally, totally unused. It's, it needs a lot more. So my, my vision is to really see a lot more there. Also, a little more diversity in what we've got. The Northwest Quadrant is all homes, there's not much else out there. The Southwest Quadrant or towards Gavelin, the same thing. I'd really like to see more diversity in what we're doing, more commercial, more shopping, just more entertainment. It's just, I don't really like to just see all homes. I think we need more diversity. But that, that's what I'd add to this discussion.
Okay, thank you. Adriana?
Hey, I think Gilroy, it's, it has a great advantage regarding other cities because the, the nature here, it's so diverse itself. And so we have to take advantage of that. And one thing that I noticed is when I talk about the wine trail with people in San Jose, they don't even know that there is this, all these, those wineeries around us. And I think, I think the city of Gilroy needs to grow its social media and to let people know what we have. So we can bring, we have a whole entire Bay Area here. We need to bring those people, those people in. We cannot just do things and, you know, and shut down, not let anybody know what's going on. We need to bring those people here, and that's going to bring even for like a day or for a few hours, just to come and see what Gilroy is all about. It's not just about garlic, it's about what we have, like what, you know, the nature around us and everything that we have. And of course, we can, I see the potential of the, the, you know, of Gilroy being that, like this, I'll even say a leader in this space because we have, because of the resources that we have around us. We just need to use in a good way and also let people know what's going on over here.
Okay, thank you. All right, Anador?
Yes, thank you. Yeah. Can try to repeat some of what the other applicants said, so.
That's fine.
I, I agree, I think we need to put Gilroy on the map for having more than just the, the garlic connection. Because, you know, I came from the last twenty-five years in Cupertino, and that's all I ever thought of when I heard the word Gilroy. It was the Garlic Festival and the outlets. So I was quite surprised also to find that this is a very active wine-growing region. I also agree with the other applicant, I think the ice skating facility is going to be fantastic if we can get that secured. I also agree with, I think we need to update and expand Gilroy Gardens because that's also a, a nice destination. Overall, foster tourism without sacrificing our open space. I think we need more diversity as far as the businesses that we are trying to attract. And I have some ideas about the downtown and getting that fixed up. And until we can find tenants that are willing to do the, that come in there is that we, we just create a, a false front, get all these buildings painted and put awnings and pretty signage and you know, no, no window frames and whatnot, and just make it look like Universal Studios. Just make it appear attractive and like a place that people want to stroll around. So even if there's various locations or businesses that are not occupied, we don't necessarily have to display that, right? I think that's one of the the things that, that I would like to see is this, for us to bring, bring more attention to downtown.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now I have a question. And then I don't know that there'll be time, Councilmember Armadere, for a third round of questions. So if you don't mind, since you were asking questions of the other ones, could you please? Okay, all right, so I would like to ask everybody about time commitments because Planning Commission is a biggie. And it's, it's got a lot of responsibilities to it. So you as commissioners are super important. And the agendas you'll be looking at are ones that the public might have lots of comments on. And you're an advisory board, although there are some things that you are the final vote on. So I would like to ask each of you if you're aware of the duties and the time commitments involved on the Planning Commission and how you're prepared to fit that into your lives. And so I'm just going to randomly call now out of order so that nobody can be expecting this. So I will start with Dave Matuzak. Dave, are you there?
Yeah, now I am. Thank you. Yes, I'm aware, and I do not have any other major commitments. The only other, I'm retired, and the only other one is Historic Society Board, and that is not at all time commitment, several hours a month. Yeah, I'm ready.
Thank you, thank you. Adriana?
Hey, I'm here. I, when I apply for this position, I already, I was aware of what the work that's involved. And I already do partially of that by, again, be around the community and try to do, you know, try to do other things as well that to improve the community. But I think overall, it's not only about reading, but it's also about, has to be a place, it has to be a data-driven and also a person who works with this needs to be involved with the community and hear the people, not only the data, but the people and put those two things together. And voila, that's the, I think that we can do great with that. And I, regarding my availability, yes, I am available.
Great, thank you. All right, Z?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm self-employed. I don't have any children, and I have a lot of time on my hands.
Great. No children says it all, gosh. Okay, thank you. Anador?
Yes, I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Even though I don't have a busy job, I found that I ended up watching Planning Commission meetings and council meetings and in preparation was reading through a lot of the materials. So I'm kind of invested in what's happening here in Gilroy already. So that it would just be making it official and, and jumping in there. I also am hoping to retire early by the end of this, this year, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I went out of order that time, so did I miss anyone? Shout out, go ahead and take yourself off mute if I missed a Planning Commission applicant with that question. No? Okay, then, thank you, thank you all so much. February 7th, right, will be when we revisit this issue. Please know, all applicants are welcome to, you can email or contact council members if there's anything you wanted to say and didn't tonight. And that goes for council members too, they can contact you with questions. So anything you feel you need to say that you didn't have a chance to say, you can still, still do that. All right, so thank you all. Good night.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay. Phew, it is 7:10, and we are now on agenda item four, which is presentations to the council. And I need to read COVID-19 instructions again. Now is the time for the public comment portion of this meeting for anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda. One minute will be allowed per speaker. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen. Or if you are calling in, press star nine. At this time, I'm asking the city clerk whether there are any public comments.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have three written comments from Joseph Thompson, the Democratic Socialist of America Senator Cruz Chapter, and Maria Iguilar. At this time, I have one raised hand from Paul Brown. Go ahead, please. Unmute yourself.
Oh, hi, this is the Browns. We're just calling in or on Zoom tonight to see what has been, if anything, has been settled with the homeless encampment by my child's school off IU. There's been fires, at least four, in the morning and in the evening. And the firefighters get there and put them out. But it's getting worse instead of better, so I'm just wondering what's going on with that, if anything.
Okay, thank you. Ty, next, next speaker, and then I'll, I'll follow up with staff and see if there's any, any response that you want to give to that.
Yes, the next one, oh my gosh. I apologize here, the screen just screwed, it just went haywire on me. All right, the next one is AC. I will go ahead and promote you, just give me one second. Go ahead, please. AC, you are allowed to speak.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I have a question for Rebecca Armendares. Why haven't you reached out to the Zuniga Messias family?
Okay, is that, is that your comment?
And also, I would like her to step down.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else?
I do not see any raised hands at this time. Oh, what, hold on, there's one more. I do have, just came in, it was GPS parent Araceli. Go ahead, please.
Hi. Hello, everyone. I'm also wanting to know about the homeless encampment as well. I just want to add also to the Browns' family that my child came home the other day and asked me what was a tube that somebody was smoking out of, a glass tube? So I just feel like this really needs to be addressed. That's all I want to say.
Okay, thank you. Ty, are there any others?
I do not see, there's just one, actually, hold on, there is now Paul Brown and Karina Grahelis. Paul, Mr. Brown, go ahead, please.
Yeah, thank you for your time, Mayor and councilmembers. My wife spoke a little earlier, I just wanted to add on another comment to that, that you know, the, the, the homeless situation is difficult, the mental health situation is difficult, the drug use and drug addict situation is difficult, and all those are very complicated large issues. And I understand that it's going to take more than, you know, this meeting to address, but the issue we want to address here is safety. It's child safety of these kids at Gilroy Preparatory School. We cannot have these people located where they are in our city. You know, I could speak more about, we were talking about the Planning Commission earlier, and you had some great folks and candidates that want to dedicate their time to that. It's hard to have a plan when we have, you know, some of these lawless situations going on around the city. It's not going to attract the kind of business.
Thank you, sir. It's been a minute. I don't know why the clock on our screen isn't going, but I have to get the same amount of time. Okay, thank you. And I am going to let our city administrator respond to that particular question. So are there any others that are not on that subject, any, any more public comment? Ty, do we have any more public comment?
Yes, I have Ms. Karina Grahelis. I'm going to unmute her just one moment. Go ahead, please.
Hi, Karina Grahelis, parent of a GPS student as well, just wanted to add on, so it is the same comment regarding the safety of the students, but also to consideration the time that it takes for the students to have to carry on fire drills during school time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Jimmy, I'm going to let our city administrator go ahead and respond since this is probably the right, the good time for him to do that. Go ahead, Jimmy.
Right, thank you, Madam Mayor. I do want to inform those who have been asking about the situation at Gilroy Prep, we have an ongoing conversation with school administration. There is a plan in place in order to remedy these situations. But you are talking about a homeless encampment during COVID-19, which further complicates issues. Whenever there is criminal Whenever there is criminal activity, it is being addressed by Gilroy PD, so I encourage people to continue to call, continue to notify us of those activities. But I also ask you to communicate with your school as well because there has been a plan and a remedy developed by both the school and the city for addressing the situation there. So we, we'd be happy to continue that conversation, but we feel like we're in a good place with the school. And so we would ask the parents to please also reach out to the school as well as they can communicate that plan with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Okay, tie back to public comments, if there are any others?
I do not see any raised hands at this time, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Then I will close, see no additional audio comments, public comment is now closed. And we go on to reports of council members. Council member Braco.
That's the end of report.
All right, council member Armandares.
Thank you, Mayor. We held the last Historic Heritage Committee meeting where we updated and finalized language on the historic ordinance. We added some language that was pretty important to distinguish between historic, historic structures and historic resources. And I thought that was important so that we can differentiate between, you know, buildings that no longer exist or sites that are important historically and actual buildings and structures. Our Ad hoc Committee on Gourmet Alley also met. All three of us were, all three council members, members of the committee were present and we discussed a work plan and some goal, some discussion of goals and an agenda for our next meeting. And also, we just, we decided to, or I should say, it was decided to expand the discussion of the Ad hoc Committee beyond Gourmet Alley to a general, this committee about downtown. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to pause right here and ask our city clerk, can we return the screen without the clock?
Yes.
Okay, and some members of the, of who are making public comment be let out? I still, I'm still seeing some, yeah. Okay, okay, council member Marks?
Yes, I attended last week the Santa Clara Valley Agency Implementation and Governing Boards Meeting. An amendment was proposed to add new species to the endangered list plan. And the purpose was to protect these species and their breeding grounds. Also, they shared a very interesting fact. Santa Clara County is number one in the nation with having 92% of its population vaccinated. So good job, Santa Clara County. And that's it.
Okay, council member Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I was going to speak about the Gourmet Alley, but my colleague, council member Armandares said it quite elegantly, so I won't repeat. I am meeting with, actually, council member Marks and I are meeting with the president Mark Turner of the Chamber tomorrow, just sort of follow up with him and ask him some questions and see what is happening on his side with downtown and sort of businesses coming into Gilroy. So I look forward to that discussion.
Okay, thank you. I did not skip council member Hilton. He is absent. So moving on to council member La Romanios.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of announcements. The Water District and Silicon Valley Regional Interoperability Authority will be meeting later this week. So I'll report out at our next meeting as to what transpires later this week. The Cities Association of Santa Clara County met two weeks ago. One of the interesting tidbits that I wanted to just share was that we were looking at our collective priorities for cities in the county. And one of those was about protecting and preserving local control from the sometimes overreach of the state government. So we're going to be looking at policies as a cities association through that lens. How do we preserve local control going forward? So I'll be reporting back as we look at specific bills over the course of the year. Finally, with regard to the Gilroy Youth Task Force, we met this afternoon. We received reports from Police Chief Espinoza, who shared some positive news that there has been a very low number of youth arrests relative to past trends over the last several months. So that's been very good to see. However, Bernice Aguilera shared that within the schools, we're seeing students who are exhibiting different types of behavior that they might have picked up from older siblings or even parents because they're all kind of sharing that space during COVID. And so some bad habits are being picked up by some of our younger students. So just something to, to be aware of for, for parents and students there. Finally, the Youth Task Force also received contributions at the end of last year from the Gilroy Police Officers Association and the Gilroy Exchange Club. So a big thank you to those two organizations for supporting our youth programs here in Gilroy. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Excellent report. I'm sorry I had a conflict. It couldn't be at that meeting, but I, I am the treasurer and that, yeah, the treasurer's report was something I passed on and yes, glad to hear that. I was also in attendance with council member Marks at the Habitat Agency Governing Board, and she already reported on that. There were no other meetings that I'm assigned to since our last council meeting, but I do want to point out two things. One, I recently did a, my, the spotlight that I do as the mayor each month on different departments, I just did it on the fire department. I pushed it out this far, hoping that by the time I got to it, we'd have more to say about the fourth fire station. And we do have things to say, not as definitive time wise as we would like, but we are getting there. So I'm announcing on February 5th, the Conversation Coffee with the Mayor will be talking about that. And also, I'd like to share something that our county is doing. It's a project called Womanhood. And this is something that their advisory committee is going to select women who represent all of Santa Clara County from a range of cultural, occupational, ethnic, and generational groups, for the purpose of which is to create a countywide group of temporary and permanent artworks that recognize the diverse achievements of women in our county. So it's a fun thing to look forward to, another thing of the arts. And I wanted to share that information. Okay, future council initiated items. Seeing none. Consent calendar. Council members, does anyone wish to remove anything from consent?
Move for approval.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion by council member Tovar, seconded by council member Marks to approve the consent calendar. Ty, roll call vote?
Yes, council member.
I'm sorry, wait, I didn't do public comment.
Thank you.
My apology, apologies, public comment on, on consent calendar. Do we have any?
I do not see any raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. Closing the public hearing and now go ahead.
Council member Armandares.
Yes.
Council member Braco.
Yes.
Council member Hilton is absent. Council member Lido Munoz.
Yes.
Council member Marks.
Yes.
Council member Tovar.
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. Okay, item eight, A, bids and proposals. Award a contract to PC Incorporated for the City Hall Backup Generator Project Number 21-PW-268 and approve a project expenditure of $708,885. Okay, Daryl Jordan is going to be giving this staff report, I believe.
Totally, Madam Mayor, I'm going to be giving that this evening.
Sorry, Gary, okay.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm going to share my screen here with the presentation. Can you guys see that? Okay?
Yes.
In presentation mode here and away we go. So this evening I have for you the word of the contract to PC Inc. For the City Hall Backup Generator Project. This project will provide power to City Hall in the event of power outage and includes the installation of a new automatic transfer switch connecting the existing 1,000 kilowatt generator at the police station to City Hall for that backup power. This will enable us to provide customer service at City Hall and the counters during any kind of power outage. And I'm happy to announce the city just recently was awarded $300,000 grant from Cal OES towards this project. So that will help offset some of the costs. In terms of the design, which is, which was completed some time ago, the city issued a request for proposal. Back in 2019, the city received three proposals and selected Advanced Design Construction Consulting, Inc. Based on qualifications and understanding, the city executed the agreement back in August for $88,000. And again, the scope of services is to connect the existing 1,000 kilowatt generator at the police department to City Hall. From a construction standpoint, that project was advertised back in December. Bids were open January 4th and the staff received four bids with the lowest responsible bidder being PC Inc. out of Grover Beach. And there were no local bidders that provided bids. The total project construction bid was 557,200 with the 10% contingency gives us 612,920. The design permits, et cetera, including the 88,000 comes to 95,965 for a total project cost of 708,885 with the $300,000 we're getting from Cal OES. The total out of pocket cost for the city is 408,885. That staff is recommending the adoption of a resolution from the city council for the city of Gilroy, amending the budget for the city of Gilroy fiscal year 2122 and appropriating proposed expenditure amendment. Also, to award a contract to PC Inc. in the amount of 557,200 with the digital project contingencies of 10% for total project construction cost of 612,920 for the City Hall Backup Generator Project and authorizing the city administrator to execute contract and associated documents. And that concludes my presentation. Available for questions.
Thank you, Gary. Yeah, so for those who, who maybe didn't catch it in the, in, well, not didn't catch it, but this item is coming before us just now because we just recently got that $300,000 grant, right, from Cal OES? And so, right, it, it, we just now got that money. We needed that money to go forward. And as far as a budget amendment goes, what we're being asked for is 183,000, not the 708,000, but the 183,185 is what's over what was originally budgeted for here. So I just wanted to make that clarification for anyone. And now go to council members and see if you have any questions of Gary. And I see council member Braco with a hand raised.
Yes. When, when did the council originally approve this? Was it like four, five years ago?
I don't know, Gary.
I believe it was approved back during Gabe's time, so probably about three, four years ago. Yeah. But we recently approved, go ahead.
Well, and are, are we sure that the generator at the police department is going to handle both buildings?
Yes, we've heard from the consultant that it's, that it's overbuilt and oversized for the police department is more than adequate to cover both the buildings.
And it costs over $700,000 to hook up to that one?
To be honest, the price did, did surprise us a bit, but you know, based on what we're seeing now with, with construction costs going up, materials costs going up, that's what we, that's what we received as the lowest responsible bidder, yes.
Gary, now, is there like a guarantee if, if the consultant was wrong and the power goes out and can't handle both buildings? Can we go back after them?
Based on the design, there was the responsible designer for that. And so, yes, but we're pretty convinced that the 1,000 kilowatt generator should be adequate for both buildings.
Thank you.
Any other questions before I go to public comment? Okay. I have to read this again. Now is the time for public comment portion of this meeting. Three minutes will be allowed. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen, or if you are calling in, press star nine. At this time, I ask our city clerk whether or not we have any public comments.
Yes, we have one public comment, but I also see council member Marks's hand raised prior to you reading the COVID language.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. You're, you started to read when my hand went up, so you didn't see it. I just want to follow up on council member Braco's question. Gary, how long is that, I'm going to call it a warranty, that's probably not the appropriate word, but how long is that company responsible if that backup generator doesn't cover both buildings?
It's a really good question. I'm not sure I have the answer for that. Maybe Andy, is there an answer there, Andy? You can help us with?
You would, you would think there ought to be. I think it depends on the nature of it. For example, this is, would be professional liability presumably for the consultant. It could also be a breach of contract. Breach of contract would be four years, professional liability, maybe three. But it would be several years in any event, from the discovery of the, and it would, if it's a latent defect, it could be from the discovery of the defect as well. So we're probably covered. Now, whether the consultant has, has, has adequate insurance, whether they're capitalized, I don't know anything about them at this point. It is, however, a big generator. I think that's clear. A megawatt generator is a very large machine.
All right, great, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, returning to public comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have one raised hand. It is Charlene. I'm going to get my clock ready so that she, this person can hear the timer.
Okay.
Go ahead, please.
Charlene, you can unmute yourself. She's still muted. Is that within her control?
Yes, I've already allowed her to.
Okay, there she is. Go ahead.
Okay, it's actually my mom that's going to speak because she was kicked out of the meeting. They kicked me out. So I am Petra Macias.
Oh.
I have been a resident here all my life. I grew up here and it was safe at one time. And with all my respects, we do not need shopping centers right now and stuff like that. We need to keep this community safe. We need to focus on how to take the guns away from children. And we need to focus on having more responsible people in this council that can make responsible decisions and be responsible and keep us safe. So I'm asking again for Rebecca to step down from council. And that's how I feel. And you guys kicked me out.
Okay, I'm sorry, didn't mean to kick you out. I think we were doing commission interview. It's, I can't have a conversation with you here. I just mean that we were doing commission interviews when your name showed up and that wasn't the, it was commission interviews. Anyway, thank you. Thank you for your comment. Are there any others?
I do not see any other of the raised hands.
Okay. Okay, closing public comments and.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right.
Second.
Motion by council member Braco, seconded by council member Tovar. Roll call vote.
Right, we need to, there, there are two separate items here, actually.
Okay, so this is roll call vote for A.
For adopting the resolution, yes.
Right.
Okay, council member Armandares.
Yes.
Council member Braco.
Yes.
Council member Hilton is absent. Council member Liro Munoz.
Yes.
Council member Marks.
Yes.
Council member Tovar.
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. Okay, that brings us to item B, which is to award the contract. If there's no further comment and someone would like to make a motion, we can move straight to.
Go move.
Second. Okay, that was moved by council member Braco and seconded by council member Armandares. Roll call vote.
Council member Armandares.
Yes.
Council member Braco.
Yes.
Council member Hilton is absent. Council member Liro Munoz.
Yes.
Council member Marks.
Yes.
Council member Tovar.
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. Okay, item nine, public hearings. We have none. Item 10, unfinished business. Gary, this one I know is you. Staff report on our city sidewalk assessment update.
I'm back. Yes, let me go ahead and share my screen again here. Another presentation. Everybody see that? Okay? Moving forward. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. I'm here this evening to provide you an update on our recently completed sidewalks assessment. Back in August of 2020, the city council awarded a contract to Street Scan, Inc. for the citywide sidewalk assessment. The citywide sidewalk assessment was conducted in the fall of last year and covered 192 miles of city sidewalk. That's a lot of sidewalk. I'll give you a little background on the sidewalk repair program because you can't talk about sidewalk damage without talking about the repair program. The sidewalk repair program basically is really popular. It's expended all the budgeted funds over the past several years. There's a lot of community interest in the program. And in fact, we currently have a backlog of about 30 plus requests that staff is working through. The program is resident driven, meaning that the residents need to take action to participate and request that participation. And then we go out and meet with them, et cetera. That participation and then we go out and meet with them, et cetera. So it is resident driven. Funding covers residential reimbursement of fifty percent of the sidewalk costs. And a hundred percent of any tree related cost, including the removal and replacement of any street tree that is needed for that sidewalk repair. The annual program budget is typically spent in the first four to six months because of its popularity. We go through that money pretty quickly. And since two thousand seventeen, this citywide sidewalk program has funded one hundred and eighty one individual residential projects. With the total shared city cost of one point two million. So we've we've made a significant investment in our in our community and our sidewalks. The sidewalk maintenance is the responsibility of Jason Property Owner, and that's again based on California Government Code fifty six ten of the Streets and Highways Code. And basically, the sidewalk repair program was put in place to address issues caused. By trees that had been approved several years ago. Without the understanding that the trees would be causing those problems. And and the understanding of really the impact of long term. Root damage to those sidewalks for those trees. Because of that, we have revised the street tree list. And now have a city street tree list that is very sidewalk friendly, meaning that the roots for those trees go down typically as opposed to laterally. This is the section of code. I'm not going to read it. It's long and and has a lot of language here, but this is the section of the Streets and Highways Code. The best it basically identifies again that it is the residents' responsibility for maintaining. Both the park strip and the sidewalk along the front of their house. Switching now to the inspection analysis. As you can guess, we the the system or the the program identified a significant amount of deficiencies throughout the city. Given the funding, though, we're only going to be looking to really address the deficiencies. That are the most significant moderate and severe uplifts, cracking and surface distortions. Those are the types of things that we would typically get. Requested to be repaired through the sidewalk program. And so those are the things that we're going to be focusing on. As can be guessed, a high percentage of the identified uplifts were caused by city street trees. And overall, approximately three point five percent of the city sidewalk is in need of repair, which means, you know, ninety plus percent of the sidewalk in the city is in pretty good shape. This is the map that was generated by the consultant based on their sidewalk inspection. You can see the red and the orange and the yellow are are areas that are in need of a significant amount of repair. And that occurs, as you might guess, in the older neighborhoods here. These are the types of things that were identified and that we're looking to repair through the program. Street tree uplifts, it like you can see here, here's an uplift without a city street tree. So we do have those as well. And then an example of of severe cracking and surface distortions. To go ahead and and fix that approximately one hundred and seventy thousand square foot of sidewalk, we're going to need overall about seven point seven million. To to make those repairs. That includes four point six million in in sidewalk repair costs. Street tree removal and replacement of about four hundred and eighty thousand. And then we've estimated soft costs of about two point five or so million, and that's for design, staff time, inspection. Construction management, et cetera. Funding for the program has been and continues to be through the vehicle registration fee program fund fund two twenty five. The CIP has budgeted five hundred and twelve thousand dollars annually through fiscal year twenty four, and then it drops off to. Two hundred fifty six thousand, which is the historic amount that we've we've received. If we do keep the annual funding at five hundred and twelve thousand past fiscal year twenty four, it would take approximately fifteen years at that rate to repair all the sidewalk throughout the city. And that concludes my presentation. I'm now available for any questions you may have.
All right, council members, any questions of Gary, Councilmember Braco, and then Councilmember Almendares?
Gary, fifteen years is that factoring in the? The rest of the sidewalks that will be slowly getting worse during that time?
You know what? What I've typically seen is that, you know, you go through those fifteen years and then you start back over and you reassess and you reevaluate and you go back out and start the program again because. Yeah, over those fifteen years, you're going to get other areas of sidewalk that are going to deteriorate and you're going to need to address those. So know that this fifteen years is the first pass.
All right, Councilmember Almendares.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary, and your team for your work on this. Will this be addressed or executed in the same way that our streets and roads are like starting with the areas that are? Damage but least damage and then getting to the more extreme damage ones? Or does it start with those that are more extreme first?
At this point, we haven't decided that. Right now, we are, you know, operating under the current sidewalk program, which again is resident driven. So people can go ahead and and request. To participate in the program and address those types of areas in their neighborhoods. Or we could look at a more aggressive approach and identify certain areas of the city. And go out and and proactively look to make those repairs. I think that's something that's continuing to be in discussion. And we hope then to bring something back to the council later on this year with an an approach on how we really want to address sidewalk repairs. Given this information that we have this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, quite a sombering report when we're trying to get money for the the streets, let alone the sidewalks. I know. Okay. Now is the seeing no other hands from council at this point. Now is the time for a public comment portion of this meeting. Three minutes will be allowed per speaker. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen. Or if you are calling in, press star nine. And I'd like to reiterate that no one is kicked off. If you're wanting to speak on an item, you need to raise your hand or press star nine. When when someone is leaving or as the prior caller thought, that's just getting you out of the. As a not not as a participant. That's all that means is taking you off as a panelist. Okay, so at this time, I will ask the city clerk whether there are any public comments.
I do not see any raised hand at this time, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so seeing none, then public comment is now closed. It's just received report, but are there any other questions that council members would like to? Ask of something that is horrifically expensive?
But would it be appropriate to ask? Because I know every once in a while we get lawsuits about people tripping on our sidewalks and things like that. Is there a a cost analysis on on how much we spend out in those kind of lawsuits?
I not have that information, but that's something.
Yeah, Councilmember Almendares, this is exactly up Leanne McPhillips's. So she'll she'll be able to get a good answer.
Yes, as your risk manager, yes, we could pull down some data from our account with municipal pooling authority. And then provide that confidentially to council.
Thank you, Leanne.
If there's detail about the about current cases, we would need to do that privately. Past cases, we can give you that history.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, but my understanding, Gary, is this is still resident driven. Residents who have right there they call in and they participate in the program. And as I recall, we even had some discussion maybe a couple of years ago. Where we were trying to get like several people in the same neighborhood to want to participate at the same time. So that we could use, you know, economies of scale to go out and do some of the repairs and have all of the homeowners benefit from that. Are we still doing that or encouraging that?
You're stealing my thunder. That's what I'm going to be bringing back as a as a recommendation. We're still looking at. Really best practices, what other cities are doing because we want to really reach out to those folks, seeing how. They're successful with their sidewalk program and then bring some of those ideas here to Gilroy. And so we feel real confident that we can do that here in the next several months and bring back a program that would really hope to address. A lot of the safety issues we have in the city with regards to sidewalk.
Okay, thank you. Oh, Councilmember Marks, you have a question?
Uh, yes, Gary, is this study just on private residential sidewalks or is it also commercial properties?
It's all sidewalks in the city.
Okay, so commercials.
Public, all public sidewalks.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to item B. Receive an update on refinancing pension obligation project and grant and it. On refinancing pension obligation. Project and grant initial authorization to proceed with the issuance of pension obligation bonds and the related judicial validation process. And this report will be from Harjo, I believe. There you are. Okay, Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the community, Hurdil Song of the Finance Director. I will be presenting the item before you. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. If I could just get a confirmation that you're able to see the slide.
Yes, I can see it.
Perfect. All right, the topic that we'll be discussing tonight again is the refinancing pension obligations and update on that and also. Seeking your initial authorization to proceed with the issuance as well as initiating the judicial validation process that's required. Some background. The city's unfunded accrued liability, which is essentially the plan's assets. You know, that are.
Your PowerPoint's not showing.
Yeah, I'm unable to see your PowerPoint.
Oh, yeah, it says you're you started sharing your screen, but we can't actually see a picture.
How about now?
No.
No. That's all.
Sorry.
Madam Mayor Harjo, if you don't mind, I can open the presentation on my end and then share screen it.
Yeah, go for it.
Okay, give me one moment, please.
Sorry, I was looking for my own report here and didn't even notice that. Oh, okay.
Well, I did see it.
All right, Ty, I'll go ahead and let you. Bring it up and drive for me.
Okay.
Or what's going on with my PC.
Give me one second here.
Harjo, I got it. Go ahead.
Perfect. Next slide, please. Okay. Talking a little bit about the background, the city's unfunded accrued liability, you know, which is. When the plan's assets are less than its accrued liability, the difference is typically called the unfunded accrued liability or the unfunded liability. For the city of Gilroy, it has increased from sixty six million to almost ninety nine million over the last seven years, which is primarily a result. Of Calper's assumption changes, for example, the lowering of the discount rate, which used to be at a seven and three quarter percent back in twenty thirteen. You know, ultimately, over the years has been reduced to seven percent and most recently. You know, in November got reduced to six point eight and also combined with the underperformance on the investment sides. Of the Calpers investments. The council included as part of the the departmental work plan in the in the current year to evaluate the restructuring of the unfunded accrued liability. We did present a initial workshop back in October as well as prepared a report. And at that time, we knew that the Calpers had preliminarily posted their fiscal year twenty one returns to be twenty one point three. But they were also conducting their asset liability management process as well, which was getting finalized in November. And from. What we know as an out one of the outcomes from that ALM process was the lowering of the discount, which is now at six point eight percent. Given those two factors, you know, the working with our financial analyst team. We project the UL to actually decrease from the ninety nine million to seventy five point three million. And in order for us to continue down this path of of evaluating, you know, pension obligation bonds and also restructuring the UL. It's a critical element is to proceed with a judicial validation action that's required for pension obligation bonds. And that's primarily the action that. We'll be seeking at the end of this presentation and we'll talk a little bit more. Okay, next slide. Thank you. What is restructuring of the UL? Essentially, it is borrowing money to pay off all or portion of the UL with the Calpers. It could be looked at similar to refinancing a mortgage or a credit card, which has a higher interest rate for a lower interest rate. For us, it would be, you know, converting high interest rate debt, which is a Calpers UL to low interest rate by issuing up the bonds, taking advantage of the current market environment. And this is typically done via the pension obligation bonds, also known as POV. Some of the pros, which we have communicated in the past are, you know, exactly the the rates that the POVs are issued are significantly lower. Than what Calpers charges us, which is a six point eight percent. In the current market environment, we can look at anywhere from three point two five percent to three point five percent, depending on. Term credit and timing of of the market. One of the big. You know, the cons or the risks we would evaluate are the. You know, the risks around reinvestment. So. Market timing greatly impacts the long term economics of POVs. Typically because we we issue the bond and we make that lump sum payment to the pension system and they turn around and invest it. Which would have otherwise been paid out and invested by the system over time, over multiple years. Next slide, okay. So this is a basically a projection of the city, the city's UL payment accounting for those two adjustments that we. That I talked about earlier, which is the fiscal year twenty one investment returns as well as the new six point eight. Percent discount. So on this graph to the right, you'll see the bar graphs are illustrating the current UL payment and then the line graph. Illustrates the projected UL payment after those two adjustments are factored in. And it would drop the city's UL. Payment to around eight million dollars. However, it is important to note that, again, this is a current snapshot in time. So at this point, this is what this forecast looks like. Any future impacts of Calpers, either if they underperform on their investment returns. Or they actually proceed to even lower the discount rate even further would have a direct impact on the UL payments that the city would have to make. Next slide, market update. Again. It's been a a huge theme in in California as well, almost about eighty eight plus agencies have issued UL restructuring bonds. Since just twenty twenty rates for those agencies have typically been as low as two point five percent to about four point two five percent. And most of the twenty twenty one deals were between two point five and three point two five. Some of the Northern California cities that we may recognize include Santa Ramon, Corry Madera and Auburn. Next slide. Thank you. Again, this is a preliminary UL restructuring options back in. October, when we presented, you know, we presented eighteen year, a twenty two year. So essentially what we did here is we took the same. Estimates and updated it with the current market environment. So. The table demonstrates two options, one at eighteen year, second at twenty two, both for the seventy five million projected UL. And, you know, notably, if you've been following the markets, there's certainly been an increase in the interest rates in response to the, you know, the federal. Statements on pricing and, you know, additional interest rate hikes this this calendar year. So, you know, what what notably changed are there's a slight decrease in average annual savings. For both eighteen year as well as the twenty two year. So the amounts that you see here on the bottom line. With the eighteen year maturity, you'd be looking at about two million dollars in average annual savings with a twenty two year maturity. We'd be looking at about two point seven million dollars now in average annual savings. Next slide, you know, one of the one big question and important factor that will, as we continue down this path, will have to. Addresses, you know, what what exactly are how are we going to prioritize these savings and how are we going to actually reinvest these savings into what potential uses? So this slide just outlines, you know, some potential uses. Again, this would be up for discussion as we kind of continue down further. Down this conversation. So it could include, again, we know we have general fund operations that could be enhanced. You know, the example would be staffing of the fire station in the future, we could increase. In the future, we could increase our investments in the streets or other CIPs. We could also, you know, take some of those savings and put them back right back into the Section 115 trust for pension and or OPEPs just for any future economic impacts, so they can be absorbed. Or, you know, we would have the conversation around any other initiatives that the council may be interested in. Okay, next slide. This outlines a preliminary timetable, a chart, if you will. You know, we started this conversation back in fall of 2021. We prepared the report. We're currently in January 2022, you know, receiving an update and asking for initial authorization to proceed with a validation process, which we'll talk a little bit about more. From February through April, we would expect to come back to council with refined restructuring options, a stress test analysis, drafting of a potential formal pension funding policy. Also have the discussion around, you know, once if we go down this route, we end up, you know, issuing the bonds. What are we going to do with the savings and how are we going to program those? And we would also be working to prepare the legal documentations during this period. And we expect by around May or June, we would have the validation proceedings complete and then we would go before council. You know, with any preferred options and the approval of the preliminary offering statement of the bonds. Again, at that time is when council would initially be taking any steps to their issue the bonds or not. Okay, thank you. Talking a little bit about the judicial validation process. The purpose of a bond validation is essentially to get a court determination before the bonds are even sold and that they will be upheld as binding and valid and legally payable obligations. So the process is used regularly to enhance the attractiveness of the bonds as investment and also to protect the taxpayers and the bond investors. So this, you know, pension obligation bonds are typically unsecured debt and they fall under a exemption to the California Constitution's debt limit provisions. So essentially, we're interpreting that the state law, you know, that the refunding of any of these unfunded liabilities that are owed to Calpers constitute a obligation imposed by law. So therefore, you know, they are exempt from certain requirements of the Constitution's debt limitation provision. So essentially, we'll have our bond counsel go, you know, file a proceeding in the Santa Clara County Superior Code. Our goal is to receive a judgment confirming that the city may issue the POVs that are payable without violating any debt limit. There have been other cities, as I've outlined, you know, 80-plus agencies that have already gone through this validation process. So there's prior court cases that have determined this as well. And we would expect a similar favorable action as well. And this, again, this process is required to give the bond investors assurance as to the validity of the bonds that they're purchasing. And the ultimate benefit of going through this process is, you know, we're not issuing the bonds now, but rather the city will preserve, if we get a favorable judgment, we preserve the right to issue at a later date, even if the council ultimately decides not to move forward at this time. So any future considerations, we wouldn't have to go through the validation process. Last slide. So the actions before are you are basically adopting a resolution, which engages the financing team, approves the form of the trust agreement and authorizes the proceedings with validation action as well as a trust agreement, which is a legal document pursuant to which the bonds are ultimately sold. So the court would need a form, a basically a form of document to review and that's what that document would be. And again, as I kind of outlined before, next steps, you know, once if the council does approve this action tonight, bond council will initiate that validation process and the staff will continue to work with the council from February through April around analysis and discussions around, you know, what restructure option might be the best fit. Do some stress test analysis around that as well as talk about those priorities that we may want to fund from these savings. With that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
Thank you, Harjo. Well, this is a, this is a biggie. We all know. And when we had the study session last October, you know, four of us advanced it to this point. I, Councilmember La Romanios, Councilmember Tovar, myself, and Councilmember Marks. I hope this report tonight makes it even more clear for those, this unfunded liability is huge. And it is, it's like refinancing a mortgage that you've been carrying at an interest rate that is so much higher than what you could refinance for now. So, yeah, it's a biggie. I'm going to go to council members and I see Councilmember Bracco has his hand raised. So we'll start with you.
Yes, I was one of the no votes last time. But I met with our city administrator and got a better understanding of this. And I'm going to vote to move ahead, but I would like our council to really seriously consider starting a reserve fund or something to put money into, put the savings into that until we build it up. Because we all know they're not very good investors with that money. And they're going to come in short. And if they come in, you know, $2, $3 million short, a couple of years in a row, we can find ourselves right back in a mess again with this big debt building every year. So, and that was one of the things that I really got from our city administrator was by doing this, it's in our hands then. If it comes in $2 million short, it's up to us what to do to either go into the budget, find the money and pay it, or start accumulating the debt again. So I would like us to really think seriously about that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other council members with questions? Okay, here goes. Now is the time for the public comment portion of this meeting on this agenda item. Three minutes will be allowed per speaker. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen or if you are calling in, press star nine. At this time, I'll ask the city clerk if we have any public comments. Ty, do we have any public comments?
Sorry about that. I was on mute. No, Madam Mayor, no, that it's this time.
Okay, see, no public comments then. Public comment is now closed. And so possible action is to receive the report and then to adopt a resolution. And looking for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, great. A motion by Councilmember Bracco and seconded by Councilmember La Romanios to adopt a resolution. I guess I don't need to read it, right? I was doing that in time. You told me I didn't have to. So roll call vote.
Yes, Councilmember Almaderas.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton is absent. Councilmember Libra Munoz.
Yes.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar.
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes.
And for the record, although it was not read, it is to adopt the resolution as stated on the agenda.
Right. All right. Is that good, everybody? Okay, introduction of new business, item 11. Enter into lease agreement with Santa Clara County and First Five of California to use San Ysidro Cultural Center as a family resource center. And Adam Henig, you are here, correct?
I am here, yes.
Yay. All right. Take this puppy away.
Okay, good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Adam Henig, Recreation Manager. I will be presenting about the opportunity for the city to establish a full-service First Five Demonstration Family Resource Center at San Ysidro Cultural Center located at San Ysidro Park. To make this happen, the city would partner with three agencies. This is the County of Santa Clara, probation department's Neighborhood Safety Services Unit, First Five of Santa Clara, and Catholic Charities. For decades, San Ysidro Park was known as a park that was inaccessible for families due to illicit and negative activities. Under the formation of the South County Youth Task Force, one of the identified objectives was activating San Ysidro Park that included reopening the San Ysidro Cultural Center. Through public investment and implementing innovative violence prevention strategies, the center has served as a community hub, offering free pro-social programs supported by the county and city of Gilroy. Some examples include sponsoring multi-generational and multicultural special events such as Party in the Park, collaborating with the Santa Clara County Public Health Department to promote healthier lifestyles, hosting community-based academic and enrichment pro-social programs for youth and parenting classes for adults, and the development of the San Ysidro Nueva Vida group. Despite the success of the activation, more is needed to address the needs of the neighborhood, especially its younger residents. Compared to the rest of Gilroy, residents living in East Gilroy neighborhood, where the proposed site will be located, face significant social and political challenges. For instance, in comparison to the rest of the city, it has a higher proportion of single-parent households, households where a language other than English is spoken. In fact, the child living in East Gilroy is twice as likely to live below the federal poverty level compared to children in the entire city. Overcrowded housing conditions, increased access to tobacco and alcohol retailers, and higher than normal county teen birth rates demonstrate a community in need of support. A family resource center can address these disparities. The center would be managed by First Five Santa Clara County and implemented by the provider, Catholic Charities. Together, these agencies with support from the city will institute the First Five System of Care's evidence-based programs. Through the duration of the agreement, the county would pay $60,000 annually to the city to lease the center. This is to cover janitorial support, wear and tear of the facilities, as well as utilities such as water, gas, and electricity. The city will also have a designated representative on the San Ysidro Collaborative Council, an intra-agency body established to discuss and resolve matters of shared interests and concern regarding the use, operation, and maintenance of the center. The action item before the council tonight is to approve entering into a multi-lease agreement that would net the city $265,000 through June 30, 2026, with First Five Santa Clara County and the County of Santa Clara to utilize the San Ysidro Cultural Center for the purpose of a family resource center. This concludes my report, but I'd like to turn it over to First Five CEO Patricia Gardner for a few words and then we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I'm really happy to be here. First Five is really going to be expanding our role in South County. We have a family resource center now with Rebecca Children's Center, and this is going to help us get even more services to the community of Gilroy. And our family resource centers are really a hub where families can come and learn right away about how to connect themselves to childcare, early learning resources, parenting support. We also connect families through family navigation to a wide variety of services that they need, including make sure that they are enrolled in Medi-Cal and CalFresh and any of the benefit programs that might be available to them. We're also well-known for last year, we stood up the diaper distribution program, which was, as you recall, during the pandemic, diapers were a premium to obtain. And First Five really went into action and worked with all of our FRCs, providing diapers on site. Hopefully, we don't go back to those days, but we still are distributing diapers for families in need throughout the county through a contact with social services. So we're really excited about this expanded opportunity in Gilroy. Catholic charities will be your main provider. They have a lot of experience working with family resource centers. They've been meeting with your community council and we are actually, I'm actually going on Thursday to do a walkthrough of the building so that we can make sure that our library system, the library reading corner and other things that we have everything we need to stand up this family resource center. And we're really excited about the opportunity to partner with the city of Gilroy on this program. So thank you.
Thank you. I know that both sides, the city and county sides, have worked very hard to get to this point, to bring this up before us now. So I want to thank you all. Thank you, Adam. Holding strong for Gilroy. I know there were issues back and forth, but we got it, got it to here. You got us to the finish line. And this is a really wonderful thing to see. So I'm going to go to council comments and I might have a few more myself at the end, but this is, this is a wonderful thing to see. All right, Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Gardner. And Adam, thank you for all the work you've done and all those that are involved in this. I mean, this is something that was long overdue and I'm excited for this. And, you know, yes, I know it's going to net the city some money, but I think more than that, just the services that you're providing for residents is going to be tremendous. And I know talking with several of the residents from that area, I mean, this is something that they're desperate for and I think the entire city in general, you know, and I think I'm in support of it. I, you know, I know we say have more comments, but I want to make a motion for approval because I can't wait to get this up and running. So thank you all that are involved and I look forward to helping out any way I can. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, we got to go to public comment too. So, okay, all right, Councilmember Almaderas.
Thank you, ma'am, Mayor. Thank you, Patricia, for being here tonight. Nice to see you. And thank you, Adam, for all your hard work on this. I too am excited to see this partnership. I think it's the right fit. I do have a quick question, if you don't mind addressing it, Patricia. There's a lot of unhoused folks in the area and I'm wondering what the approach is for First Five and Catholic charities as an FRC towards getting them services as well.
Well, this is such a big question, as you know, that we don't have enough housing for the people we need housed. But I think what our family resource centers and Catholic charities do have skills on is are we getting them signed up for the voucher programs that are available? Are we getting them in the queue for affordable housing opportunities coming down the pike? Can we also shore up their, their resources by ensuring they're accessing? So housing instability is a big problem, but also staying housed is an issue, as you know. And so if we can also direct families where they can get free food, the CalFresh and other benefits that frees up money for, for housing, we try to help them with that. With that, there's no silver bullet on finding more housing. But I think we are doing as best a job as we can to work with families to create as many opportunities as possible. I'd love to say we're going to be able to fix this problem, but.
We all would love to say that.
Yeah, but, but I, but I think that, you know, making sure that people are signed up in the right places and, and getting the right benefits that they need to try to increase their housing stability. You know, because as families, the families are housed and stable, lots of other great things happen in their ability to be present for their kids. So it's an issue we really focus on.
So there'll be a staff person there who can do assessments or direct people to housing.
I think, I think, I don't know exactly all the staffing patterns, but we are looking at how do we, how do we ensure that what we call family navigators are moved into those centers. I'm not sure if they're all going to happen all on the, on day one, but we are looking at, we're looking at how do we get family navigators as part of a way to really get families directed into the right services. And also, I think also it's important that as we work with your community leaders, that we also share those resources for them because, you know, community leaders can be a great vehicle for making sure other parents and families in the community know where to find resources.
Right. Thank you, Patricia.
Thank you. Yes, we definitely have some community leaders out at the San Ysidro area, especially through Nueva Vida. So that you're right. Okay, I'd like to go to public comment. So now is the time for public comment on this item. Three minutes will be allowed per speaker. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen or if you are calling in, press star nine. So I'm going to our city clerk and asking if we have any public comments at this time.
I do have one raised hand. Actually, it was now gone. So no raised hand at this time, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
No, he's been promoted to a panelist. He's in. Said.
Yes, sorry, I don't have any comments. I just, I was supposed to be interviewed for a position of library board, so I'm sorry. I got confused between the dates and times, so I don't know whether you still want to interview. I got confused between the dates and times, so I don't know whether you still want to interview me or so you want to.
No, I'm sorry. Right, commission interviews? No, sorry. Those are, those are done. Thank you, sorry. Welcome, yeah, if there's anything more you want to say besides what's in your application, you can just email. Councilmember, but this is, yeah, this is public comment for agenda item.
No, I don't have anything. Thank you.
11A.
Sorry for interruption.
That's okay. Anyone else, Ty?
I do not see any raised hands at this time.
Okay, so are there any more comments by council?
Mayor, can I ask a quick question? Adam, and I'm hoping the answer is yes, but in regards to, it says the city will have a designated representative on the council. Is that going to be you?
You know, it'll either be myself. It may be our community coordinator, Monica Gonzalez, might be the South County Task Force Coordinator, Sandra Cruz. It'll, it'll be one of us.
Got it. Okay, that's great. And again, Mayor, if we're done, I'd like to make a motion for.
Yeah, go ahead. Make your motion.
I'll make a motion for approval for the, the lease agreement with the Santa Clara County and First Five of California to use San Ysidro Cultural Center as a family resource center.
Okay. Okay, so that motion was made by Councilmember Tovar and seconded by Councilmember Armandares. Roll call though.
Councilmember Armandares.
Yes.
Councilmember Braco.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton is absent. Councilmember Labor Munoz.
Yes.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar.
Yes.
And Mayor Blinkley.
Yes, all right. Yeah, that's a, that's a great one. That's a feel-good one. We don't get too many of those. Thank you all. Okay, agenda item 12, City Administrators' Reports. It would be Jimmy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have two quick ones, and then Rochelle will finish you off. First, I want to let council know that, an item that you approved several months ago for the city's fire stations, the, the alert system went live last week, which is an upgrade from the 1970s technology that was currently at those facilities. We're saying this a lot lately, but it's true. The money that you spent in the last few years is starting to come to fruition. A lot of the technology advances and upgrades are, are getting implemented. And this one is very important as it, it really digitizes and makes dispatching of needed fire and emergency medical responses much more efficient. So that system did go live at all of our fire stations. So far, it's, it's going well. Of course, some kinks here and there. But again, I want to thank council for the support and let them know that it actually, actually got done as well. The second part I have is, is actually on the agenda, and that's the water irrigation program. I did not know what that word meant. I had to look that up. But what, what it comes down to is the state offered communities funding in order to offset delinquent water bills. And so our finance director, Harjo, signed up, applied for that, and the city received $275,000 in grant awards in order to help some of our lowest-income individuals have their, their delinquent water bills basically written off. And Harjo has also submitted a request to the state for wastewater charges as well. So we're hoping to get good news from that program and get some funds and that we can apply to some of our bills that, you know, for a lot of people that were really struggling, really accumulated, and have really put them in a bind with little hope to probably, for some of them to be able to pay them off. So that's a, it's a great thing that our, our, our finance department did as well. The last part is, I will turn it over to Rochelle, about, Redep, Rochelle, Redell. Rochelle Bedell, that is our community engagement manager, and we'll talk to you about the fentanyl outreach program that she has initiated and collaborated with, with some community partners. So go ahead, Rochelle.
Great, all right. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you so much for having me tonight. My name is Rochelle Bedell. I'm the Communication and Engagement Manager for the city of Gilroy. Tonight, we're here to talk with you about the fentanyl outreach campaign. Really excited about this and, and the things that we've learned as we've started putting this together. I want to start with some background. Before we put this campaign together, we wanted to make sure we had a good understanding of the issue and understanding of what efforts had been made so far throughout our community. And I did the best practices. So we met with the County Behavioral Health Services, Gilroy Unified School District, the District Attorney's Office, and South County Youth Task Force. Our findings showed that there had been efforts made in our community. The most extensive efforts were started before the COVID pandemic. And then those efforts were put on hold due to the needs of the pandemic. There were some other efforts that were made throughout the community since that time, though not quite as extensive. We also learned that the County Behavioral Health had some, some campaign materials that seemed to be the most effective, and they'd used them with test audiences and things like that. So our campaign is based off of these materials. And, and then the last piece, the best practices, just finding out what, what messages resonate with the community. So the goal of our outreach efforts are, one, to bring awareness of the dangers of fentanyl to our community, including bringing that awareness to both students and parents. And then, secondly, to provide opportunities for Narcan training, especially to staff and student leaders of the Sil, the city and Gilroy Unified School District. As we put our plan together, our first piece was to put together a social media campaign. We really wanted this to be a bilingual social media campaign, and we chose the Expect Fentanyl campaign that the county had put together. This campaign was shown to be the most effective and best well-received by audiences. So that's why we focused ours around this campaign. We did add in a couple of additional outreach pieces to it to help people understand what an opioid overdose looks like and some additional information around the Narcan trainings and the, the Narcan medication itself. We went out ourselves. Once we developed this campaign, we did have county review it and approve it, and then we had it translated and developed the images to go with those translations so that we could reach out to both our English and our Spanish-speaking community. Our, and that campaign started mid-last week, and it will go through the 27th, or I believe that's Thursday of this week. The next piece is an email to staff, and this was specifically so that we could both inform our staff and invite our staff to be part of the Narcan trainings. And this email also went to the Gilroy Unified staff as well. And we thought it was really important that our staff and school district leaders understood the issues around fentanyl and also had the opportunity to both be trained in Narcan and receive a Narcan kit. So with that being said, we do have four Narcan trainings available. One is open to the public, and that's going to be this Thursday on January 27. It is virtual, and I do have information in, in a further slide that will tell people how they can register for that. They can also find the registration link on the city's website or on the city's social media channels. Two of the Narcan trainings that we've scheduled are specifically for city of Gilroy and Gilroy Unified School District staff. And so those are both scheduled for February. Again, we're super excited about those. Based on my numbers from today, we have more than 34 Gilroy Unified staff members signed up for those trainings. So we're really pleased with those results. We hope more will sign up over the next few days, but that's looking really good. The last Narcan training is one that we coordinated with the South County Task Force and the DA's office. They really wanted one that was in-person and that was targeted to the Spanish-speaking community. So they have scheduled one that's going to be part of the Nueva Vida Cafe Sijo in, I believe, April. So that's specific to them and their needs, and we're really excited to be able to offer that to that specific community. The next piece that we're working on is some fentanyl flyers. And again, these are really targeted towards the Nueva Vida group and our Spanish-speaking community. We know that they aren't necessarily on social media. They aren't necessarily checking our city website. But with these flyers, we can work with the South County Task Force and the promontories, and they can go door-to-door to talk with people about the dangers of fentanyl and to also invite them to that Narcan training. So this flyer is still in development. It's not complete yet, but it is something that we're working on. And then lastly, one of the most, I guess, most anticipated pieces of this outreach plan is a youth-led virtual town hall. As we spoke with people about, or with these different partners about what might be most effective in our community, the idea of a youth-led virtual town hall really resonated with each of the partners. And the idea with this is to work with GUSD and one of the student leaders from the school district. And you can see that we're working with Mana, and I'm not going to be able to pronounce her last name right, but I'll give it a try, Cola Gottler, junior at Christopher High School. And she's going to be our leader and help guide us into putting together a virtual town hall that really resonates with the students in our community of Gilroy. We had our first meeting with her today. I think she's going to do a fabulous job. I'm really excited to learn more from her about how she thinks this should be set up to best resonate with the students. Once we get a little bit further along in the planning, we'll be working with groups such as the Youth Commission, Youth Alliance, and other youth groups to help get the word out and to help bring more students into this town hall. And this one will be targeted to both the youth in Gilroy, also their families. So we'll be looking at both of those. And then lastly, just the last little plug for the virtual Narcan training, which is open to the public, that will be this Thursday, January 27 at 7:00 PM. It will be available in both English and Spanish. We'll be doing the simultaneous language translation. Registration is required, and this is because we need the email addresses so that we can verify who was at the meeting so that we can get the Narcan kits to the right people. The registration link is a bit.ly link, so you can see it there, B I T dot O Y slash Narcan 27. As for next steps, we're continuing to look for opportunities, other opportunities to partner and to see other ways that we can continue to emphasize and promote this information within the community. We don't have anything else solidified yet, but we do have a couple of, a couple of ideas in progress, but we're not quite ready to share those yet, just because they're not solidified. And that concludes my presentation.
Very, very well done, Rochelle. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, okay, it looks like we have some council member questions, so I'm going to go ahead and then take those. Councilmember LaRoma Yos, and then I don't know who went first between Dionne and Rebecca, so I'm going to start with Peter. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Rochelle, that's fantastic. I, I, I love the fact that you received direction from us after hearing from the community, and you've really run with this. Something that really struck me, and, and I think you rightfully identified as being the thing that a lot of people are looking forward to, is the student-led portion of the, of the town hall. And, and I, I think it's so important that as we have city meetings and we're trying to speak to so many different communities in so many different, on so many different issues, that we involve members of the, of those specific communities to help us lead those efforts. So I, I think it's just, you know, it's a real credit to you, one, to address the issue as well as you've done, but two, to be creative about involving members of that community that, that are really most directly impacted. So thank you for that. I'm, I'm very excited to see how this all works itself out.
Yeah, thank you. Agreed. Okay, Councilmember Braco.
I just want, I want to echo what Councilmember LaRoma Yos said. So often when we ask for things in, in, in the city, we don't get what we ask for. This, Rachel, you went way above and beyond. I think the, the real thing that needs to happen here is the kids and the families. That's who we need to get our message to, and I think this is going to do it. Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Everyone that was involved.
Councilmember Armandares.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Rochelle. I mean, I, I don't think any of us will tire of, of thanking you for this work and admiring just how promising it is, right? Promising to do this work to get the outreach and information out there that will truly and literally save lives. So thank you, and your team.
Thank you.
Okay, Rochelle, do you have even a tentative date for town halls that you're able to disclose? I know it's tentative, but can you share that so that anybody watching would actually hear that there is a tentative date?
Yes, so the tentative date for the youth-led virtual town hall is March 15 at 6:30 PM. I'm not advertising that on city channels yet, just because I'd like to give it a couple of weeks to marinate to make sure that none of our partners back out on that. I want to make sure everyone's really comfortable with that before we start putting dates out officially, but that is a tentative date.
Awesome. All right, thank, oh, we have another question.
Yeah, one quick question. Will the youth council be involved in that at all?
We are looking at ways to involve them. For sure, we'll be involving them as we try and get the word out with advertising and promoting the event. And then we'll be looking to see if there are other ways that are good fits for them to be involved as well.
All right. Great, thank you. Really, we're all super impressed. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, city attorneys' report. Try to top that, Andy.
No, that's a tough act to follow. Thank you. I have no report.
Okay. All right, closed session. We have none. So with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Thanks all. Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.